All right, so welcome to this afternoon's. Are we good?
We're good.
Okay, this afternoon's or this evening's work session. First line of business will be to conduct roll call. Thank you. Be to conduct roll call Commissioner Sana Gregory.
I am here.
Commissioner Gail Hambrik.
She's, she's working to get on. I just talked to her a minute ago.
Okay, we'll come back to her. Commissioner Felicia Franklin Warner. All right, Commissioner Damont Davis, who is here. I just ran into him in the hallway. He will be joining us in just a second. All right, Madam Clerk, we will have the first item of business.
Hey, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Don't we have to wait for Damont to get in? We only have two of us.
We don't, this is a work session. We don't have to have a call.
Okay.
But he's here.
All right.
Yeah, because we're not voting on any things. Like I said, it's just a, a work session.
But thank you for the love.
All right, at this time, is there any preliminary items for January 5th agenda that anybody would like to discuss?
I didn't have any.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that being, nobody have anything, we'll go straight to our first discussion item, which is the discussion on medical examiner's office. At this time, I will turn it over to Chief Kevin Roberts, who I believe is online.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening Chairman and Board of Commissioners. I will make a brief presentation as you.
Okay, you're kind of distorted, Chief. Chief, you're kind of distorted. I don't know if it's your volume or if it's on our end. Jamie, no, we're good here. Okay, go ahead again, Chief. I'm sorry.
Can you copy now? Is it better?
Go ahead and try it.
Okay. I'll make a brief presentation in reference to a follow-up discussion related to the differences between the medical examiner and the coroner's office. Also, I have some information added to discuss possible cause of standing up a long-term medical examiner's office. With that, I'm gonna share my screen. I would like to share my screen. There we go. What is a medical examiner? A medical examiner is a physician, hence the title "medical examiner." The role of a medical examiner differs from that of the non-physician coroner in that the medical examiner is expected to bring medical expertise to the evaluation of the medical history and physical examination of the deceased. A coroner is a public official appointed or elected in a particular geographic jurisdiction whose official duty is to make inquiry into deaths in certain categories. The coroner's primary duty is to make inquiry into the death and complete the death certificate. Depending upon the jurisdiction and the law defining the coroner's duties, the coroner may or may not be trained in the medical sciences. The coroner is not required to be a physician nor be trained in medicine. Georgia law dictates the following requirements of the elected coroner. He must be a U.S. citizen, a resident of the county in which he or she seeks the office of coroner for at least two years prior to his or her qualifying for the election to the office and remains a resident of the county during his or her term of office. Must be a registered voter. Must be 25 years old prior to the date of the general primary in the year he or she qualifies for election to that office. Must have a high school diploma or its equivalent. Has not been convicted of felony offense or any offense involving moral turpitude. And has successfully completed the next scheduled basic coroner training class no longer than 180 days after such person's election. So the key difference is the medical education requirement for the medical examiner versus no such requirement for a coroner. As relates to the cost of staffing, the state medical examiner provided or recommended that if we stand up a medical examiner's office, we consider having two, two medical examiners with one being a chief medical examiner, eight to 10 investigators, and four autopsy technicians with a total estimated staffing cost of 1.5 million. Of course, that does not include additional office and clerical staff and equipment needed to help facilitate the same. Currently, we contract with the GBI the cost of $403,000 annually. Our surrounding county peers have medical examiner offices for points of reference. Their budgets are displayed there. Cobb County's 2021 fiscal budget was 2.3 million. DeKalb County's 2021 fiscal budget, a little bit over 3 million. And Fort Worth County, their 2020 budget was 5.3 million. So the average cost out of those three is 3.5 million. This is what we can expect to look at being our cost as a county should we go in the direction of a medical examiner's office. I wanted to be brief, but touch the points that the chairman wanted to discuss. That concludes this portion of the presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Chief Roberts? I don't know if this is a question, but I'd like to point out that those budgets for those counties are larger in population than ours. So realistically, the cost will be a little less, but we are nonetheless still looking at a seven-figure salary, right? Well, not only salary, but seven figures to set up a medical examiner's office. Madam D., I'm sorry, is there any other questions for Chief Roberts? I'm gonna get Madam DA to chime in.
And I guess I would, in fact, both of them might be an answer, which is piggybacking on what you just said. I'm looking at the highest being 5.3, and I guess that's because of population size.
Right.
And bodies processed, and the low is about 2.376 million. So granted, ours might be on the side, but my thing is begin to get to the, not the process, but what else in the startup cost do you, would you foresee?
Building. You've got to have a building, the, the fitting of the building with, I don't know what the technical term is, but I would say the freezers, the equipment for when they have the body, the slab for the bodies, all of that type of medical equipment that they will need. Recording devices so that they can dictate the autopsy as it's being done. And then you're looking at people, support staff, the investigator. So you're, you're, you're looking, I'm not somebody that's ever had to start up a business of this type, but my best guess, just looking at when we looked at the mobile mortuary units, the cost of those, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, if it's a building that we have to retrofit, I think it would be safe to say that maybe close to a million dollars if not over.
Granted, and I guess my.
If you're talking about new, then you, you know.
And then the other one, okay, and I'm just looking at it from all the, from a multifaceted point of view. The GBI was charging us 403, but we know that is not available to us any longer. So we have that. Douglas County, what is the charge on that for us?
I spoke to Ms. Rogers, and they're still, we're still in the preliminary discussion with that vendor, that LLC vendor.
Okay.
And it appears right now preliminarily it's gonna be based upon bodies. And it's not a full, robust application or, or contract.
And define that for me. What, in your term, in your estimation, what would a full, I guess a full service be?
An ME's office.
I'm sorry?
Because what, just speaking to Ms. Rogers this afternoon, it became very, very apparent to both of us, we are piecemealing things together as far as the picking up of the bodies, the storage of the bodies, having a place to store the bodies. Then the bodies being transported to the GBI. And from a prosecution standpoint, I'm looking at a chain of custody. Now I've got more people touching the bodies if I have a homicide. And that's just a defense attorney's field day. The more people that touch it, the more things that they'll say, you know, we did wrong as the state.
Gotcha.
And then I have more entities that are not accountable to anybody really, that I have to deal with. So the ME's office is gonna be the better way to go because we can put it all into one unit and deal with it and not have to deal with the different packages. But just, Chief, you weren't on the call today, but we were sitting there, it was the question of who's gonna pick up the bodies, store the bodies, and transport the bodies because the LLC is saying not, we're not doing that. And that was something we, we thought the LLC would, would be doing as far as picking up and possible storage. And they were like, no, we're not doing that. So now, and I think the chairman, you're well aware of it, we have to have a place to store these trucks, these storage trucks, mortuary rolling trucks in a secure place. So we're gonna spend a nice chunk of change.
Yeah, and Chief and I have been working through that, so we have some ideas in which to do that. So things are coming together. Of course, it is piecemealing, but it's something that has to be done, especially after February 1st. So we're working towards that end. And also, when you talk about the dollars that will be needed to set up a medical examiner's office, whether it's retrofitting a warehouse or building a new one, as far as the annual budget goes, that's a one-time expense for the building. So, or to redo a warehouse, especially if it's one that we might, may own. But that's a one-time expense. Those numbers, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, that you presented was for operational costs after, or it, or minus the cost for the building. That's salaries and operational costs. The, the annual budget that it would take to stand up an office.
Yeah, that, those were annual operating budgets without taking into consideration the cost of buildings, additional equipment, things of that nature.
Okay, so, but this would take a mid-year budget amendment, wouldn't it?
No, no. Well, yeah, we're gonna have to, definitely, depending on what the contract is, because we have already budgeted, I think it's 400 and some thousand, for the GBI to do our services.
Correct.
So whatever is left, left on that budget, once February 1st gets here, will be still, that money's already been budgeted for that services. So if it runs out, if it, if it goes over, then we will have to do a budget amendment.
But listening to DA Mosley, we're gonna be short anyway because we would use those funds. But the scope of service that she's saying that the LLC provides is not the full scope of services that are needed to get us through.
But some of that can be mitigated by properties that we own. But yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying it's a possibility, it could be overrun. We don't know yet.
Okay.
But yeah, it more than likely at some point in time before July 1, we will probably accrue additional costs.
I, I guess for me, really to move forward, and like I say, I don't know this industry at all. So it is, what is the scope of service that is needed at a minimum and for full service to get us through? If that makes sense.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Chief Roberts, you wanna?
Well, I mean, the scope of services is pretty lengthy that we review with central services. Of course, they, the responding to the scene, determining death, signing of death certificates, making contact with those families related to the deceased, things of that nature. And that's just not even half of the scope of services. It's extensive.
Right. Yeah, and we can get with Ms. Rogers to provide a scope of services through the contract in which we would ask them to, to do for us. And again, this is a temporary stopgap for us to make a decision whether or not we're gonna go with medical examiner or coroner, but as I told another commissioner earlier, it's imperative that we get it moving right now. We can't, especially if, if this board's decision is go with a coroner that has some legislative items that would need to be taken care of at the general assemblies level that we would have to get started like yesterday on.
Yes.
The recommendation of that working committee is a medical examiner's office. And just me speaking personally for myself and my background in law enforcement, I think they're absolutely correct. I think the best way to go is a medical examiner's office. It's gonna come, either one's gonna come at a cost to the county. Whether it's a coroner's office or a medical examiner's office, we still are gonna have to provide certain things in a budget for a coroner who is, who would be an elected official of Clayton County.
And I guess for me, I understand we're talking about the cost, but we also have to ask ourselves, what are we saving and putting forth with this cost? As far as in, like, like Mosley is saying, as far as in her prosecution, what are we saving on that? That, I mean, that sometimes is not a monetary value, but we've gotta begin to look at it from all, from all standpoints here, I believe.
Well, the biggest thing for me is when you look at whether or not the coroner or medical examiner's office is the efficiency of the office. Are they providing the services that's needed to get a positive outcome when it go, when it's time to go to court? Are they, are they hindering or causing bigger problem?
Correct.
Than, you know, what we are used to, such as the GBI? GBI, chain of custody, I mean, all of that rans smoothly.
Okay.
Are we gonna create a system that's gonna allow us to be effective in our court systems? And when it comes to our police officers who are standing out there on the street with a deceased person, expediency for me, but you gotta do it effectively as well. So that, that weighs a lot into what my recommendation would be. And again, it's just my recommendation, and that is the medical examiner's office who can make pronouncements and have so many other benefits as opposed to the coroner's office. And I think I spoke to you one time before about a coroner is elected official who does not have to have certain titles behind his name. It could be somebody who, let's just say, comes out from building and maintenance, want to run for office.
Gotcha.
And, you know, if he's elected by the citizens of this county, then yes, he will be the coroner. So there's some pros and cons that we definitely need to take into consideration.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Gregory.
Couple questions. Are we gonna be sharing these costs with the cities? Or we will, you know, if we are, I mean, is that gonna be negotiated in service delivery agreement? Or how will we do that? Or whatever?
Yeah, that's a conversation, discussion that needs to be had with the city, our city counterparts. And if it's agreed upon, then yes, that distribution will be along the SDS agreement.
Now, also, the, I was looking at the salaries that the chief put up for the medical examiners. Will we have those people full-time? I mean, I can just imagine those doctors, that's not a lot for them. How, how, how many hours or how much time do they give us if we decide to go this route?
You're talking about the temporary?
It'll be full-time, Commissioner Gregory. If we're going to ME's office, it would be full-time.
They'll be full-time?
Yes, ma'am, because unfortunately, we responded to a murder today at about 6 something this morning. You know, my office did. Yeah. So unfortunately, you're gonna need two, possibly three with investigators because it never, and Chief can chime in on this, and so can the chairman. The death will never happen in single. It's gonna be two or three. And people are gonna be running trying to handle these things. But the medical examiner will have, you know, him or her will take a vacation and, or might get sick. So there's gotta be somebody behind them that can pick up when they're, when they're off to do the autopsies. And, you know, somebody sign the death certificate and keep the wheel going in port, in this. So I would say a minimum of two ME's, minimum investigators, office staff, maybe one or two to do the paperwork of what's required to be sent into the state. And they're gonna have, it's, they're required to sit on certain boards that I am required to basically run by law. Child fatality, they have to sit on there. Those stats that we have to see are child abuse, sexual assault protocol. They're required to sit on that one too. So it's, it's really gonna be a 24-hour-a-day setup. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I know Commissioner Data's chime in on this a little bit early. Mr. Chair, have we had any discussions with Ms. Bivens, our chief financial officer, about how we look at monetarily? I mean, because it seems like if we're getting ready to spend out this much money, I mean, I don't know. We're definitely looking at tax increase right now, right?
Yeah, and Ms. Bivens is online. Conversation has been had with her. And again, we are already working off of a budget that we currently have with the GBI. So there are some monies already in that pot. In the long term, yes, we're gonna have to allocate more money. And when you start looking at the building itself, which is probably gonna be our biggest expense on the onset, whether we build brand-new or retrofit a warehouse or some space, then it's gonna be a one-time expenditure. So that might, that's probably something that we'd be able to pay for out of a general fund. But at any cost, it will increase our budget for next year. But again, let me emphasize, this is something that by law we have to have, whether it's a coroner's office or a medical examiner's office. Those services have to be completed or retained by the county.
And with that in mind, can we do something like we did for the hospital that time? You know, just do a, a line on these taxes where we allocate, you know, for such a cost of this? Just, I'm at the store now, I don't have to answer that right now, or whatever, but just thinking.
Yeah, when we're, when we start our budget talks and start discussing about funding this and the rest of the services we provide for Clayton County, that is something that definitely will be discussed as well. Because, you know, we always wanna be transparent to our citizens and be good stewards of the money. So we definitely will make sure that that would be notated in some form or fashion, if it's needed.
If this were, and my last question or my last statement, if we decide to build a new building or whatever, please let's not put it on Amber Block Road.
Mr. Gregory, I have, I have a thought. I would, you know, if, if, if we boil down to, boil it down to us building a building, honestly, I, you know, talking to my upper staff, we were all sitting there talking about the land behind the jail, that, that spot right next to the jail. It's where his vehicles, that spot right there. And for this main reason, you start putting, you then begin putting your whole judicial complex in one area. And when the medical examiner needs to come testify, there may be what, 200 more. Where house is not very far. They can come and run back and forth, and we're not talking about driving a far distance. And it's kind of, you're, you're kind of building what a lot of cities or major counties have when they have those judicial complex. Everything is in one area. And I, and my assumption, pre-assumption is that we own that land. I don't know. But if we do, it'd be a beautiful spot for it, that we could sit.
I totally, I totally agree. I know I felt bad saying, but I just wanted to make a statement. You know, something that I feel always, always saying or alluding to, and, and it is. We, we have to, we plan for the future of the county as well. And I agree, you know, when you mentioned like peace building, and this peace building, a building that's not conducive for this type of service, where we know we gotta have it, and we gotta have it in the future, we, we may, we may as well go on and do what we have to do because we're not just policymaking for today or next month. But it's gotta be sustainable for years to come. So that's my, that's all I have to say.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I agree with your comments 100%. But at the end of the day, of course, it'd be the will of the board as to what direction to go in, but duly noted, definitely. Any other comments in reference to this? Commissioner Gregory, you good?
Oh, yes, I'm fine. Thank you.
All right. Okay, Chief, Madam DA, thank you for your insight and the presentation. And we will move on to the next.
Merry Christmas to y'all.
Merry Christmas to y'all as well. All right. All right, next is, I asked Attorney Reed to prepare an ordinance that I believe would be helpful for us to adopt, that if we adopted a code of conduct for commissioners in which to govern ourselves by. And I asked him to present what he came up with as he looked around the state for best practices in this area. One thing I did find out, as I discussed with some of my counterparts from other counties, is that they, several counties and cities have a code of conduct. And I thought it would be prudent for us to have one as well. Mr. Reed?
All right, Commissioner Gregory, you can see the screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so as Chairman alluded, we did, I did, a lot of this information here is not my draft, but looking at several counties throughout White County, Henry County, Butts County, Camden County, just to name a few, have codes of conduct governing the actions of their Board of Commissioners not only during board meetings, but outside of board meetings. Now, the one that it's, this proposed draft is modeled after is after the Butts County ordinance. So I'm just gonna kind of click through here pretty quickly. It starts off with the quorum. It's basically summarizing that everyone should conduct themselves in a professional, respectful manner, directing how you are to make remarks. It should be to the chair and not to individual other commissioners, staff, or citizens. And that it sets an order of priority that the chair directs the meeting and that comments made by commissioners should address the motion that's being discussed. And if a commissioner believes that a rule has been broken, they can rate us a point of order, which a second is not required. And then the chair would rule on that question and could allow the board to debate the issues, or decide to issue by majority vote. Then the next is, there's conduct during meetings. And there's several. First, that this is during any public comment that be both during the zoning meetings as well as during regular business meetings that Board of Commissioners or individuals commissioners shall not speak first without being recognized by the chair, interrupt anyone who lets the floor, use profanity during any public portion of the meeting, refuse to yield the floor, or argue with the chair if the commissioners ruled out of order by the chair, make disparaging marks about, remarks again, about any person's character during the public portion of any meeting, confront anyone about a prior statement in an accusatory manner during the public portion of any meeting. And the proposed draft provides some guidelines on how to address a prior statement, mainly saying things like, well, did you tell me, or do you remember telling me? As opposed to saying, didn't you tell me, or why did you tell me X or so, or X or Y before a meeting? And that the purpose of that public comment of the mission, of the commissioners meeting is to allow the commission, members of the public, county representatives, to state their positions in an orderly fashion. And it's not a trial where persons are to be cross-examined, interrogated, belittled, or held out for public ridicule or embarrassment. Again, there's nothing that prohibits any confrontation or discussion about issues in executive session or in a closed meeting. Seven, that should not state during a public portion of the meeting that a county employee has not done his or her job, or has not done his or her job properly. Again, there's some recommendations on how to address those issues, mainly asking questions to say, did so-and-so happen in a manner that the employee can answer yes or no? If there is an issue with a county employee that has not done their job correctly, that should only be done as a hearing for the express purpose of determining disciplinary action. And there should be a, basically prohibiting putting county employees in a position of having to respond to accusations of wrongdoing. position of having to respond to accusations of wrongdoing by a commissioner during a public portion of a meeting, nor shall their integrity or competency be challenged by a commissioner during a public portion of any meeting. Again, nothing prohibits commissioners from discussing job performance of any county employee during a executive session or a closed section, a session. Eight is representing personal beliefs or positions as to positions or beliefs of the board as a whole. Again, that's until the board has made a decision or voted on a particular issue stating that your position is the position of the board as a whole would be considered out of, not within the code of conduct. Refuse to recognize the validity of an action approved by majority vote of the board. Here, a commissioner is free to state that they do not agree with a majority of vote, or that you can make a motion to reconsider a vote. However, there should not be the refusal to sign any ordinance or resolution, or contract or other legal document because there, you did not vote within the majority. And the minutes will reflect the vote taken by that individual commissioner, but there should, will not be a, if this is passed as is, won't be authorized to withhold signature on the basis that you did not vote for that particular item. And again, I think the spirit behind this is that you all operate as a board, not as individuals when it comes to county action. The minutes will reflect the vote that's taken by you at that time. Uh, and then finally, for ten, the code would prohibit divulging the subject matter of any confidential information, legal advice, or strategy discussions revealed during an executive session called for the purpose of discussing actual or potential litigation against the county or any county employee. And then there's also position, a provision in this that says that if you cannot agree to that, that you can be excluded from participating in that portion of the executive session. So that is the conduct during meetings. Conduct outside of meetings, unless directed to do so by, one, a majority vote of the Board of Commissioners, two, previous direction from the chief operating officer, or three, an exigency relating to an issue in the commissioner's district. A member of the Board of Commissioners shall not, one, direct any department head or county employee under the authority of the chief operating officer to do a job or perform a task. Essentially, the rest of that paragraph directs how commissioners are to get work done from county employees, and that would funnel through the chief operating officer. And if the off, if the commissioner is not satisfied with the chief operating officer passing that information on, or that there's an issue with how it's been done, then that can be brought to the entire board during executive session. And number two, publicly state that...
Mr. Reed, may I ask a question before you go?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. I, I want to make sure I am understanding. I'm going to give an example now. I'm riding down the road, and I see a, a big, two big bags of garbage. I immediately, you know, pick up my phone and said, hey, Ward, do you think you can get somebody out on so-and-so road? You're not referring to that, right? Because I don't want to call his employees because they're not, you know, we're not over them.
Right. And actually, I will talk about a little bit why we had the one, two, and three there. The Butts County, theirs was so strict that they did not prohibit, that they prohibited any contact between a commissioner and a county employee. But that is, that's not our culture here. I mean, typically, there's not that solid demarcation of responsibility, of communication. So in a situation like that, it would be...
Can we, can we just make like a subsection A or something that says, unless it's just to notify a department head of something such as a letter on, you know, in their district or something like that?
Sure. I mean, you can, this is your, this is the board's ordinance, so you can put in whatever you want. But I was going to say, you, you don't even have to even go that specific. If you spoke with Dietrich, and he said, hey, if you have those kind of issues, just go directly to the, go directly to the department head to resolve that.
There we go.
That would take care of that kind of issue. In that way, you don't have to codify every single type of response that would fall under that. It's just, hey, Dietrich said, go ahead and do it, or I don't want to say Dietrich, but the chief operating officer, whoever that would be, would just give authority to the commissioner, say, go talk with the department head if you have this type of issue.
Okay, so can we add something like, unless otherwise directed by the COO or something like that?
It's in there.
Oh, is it? Here we go.
Okay, because, um, I, I don't think the chief operating officer will, will be calling every time that a dead deer is in the road, you know, to get somebody to pick it up. So, and like you said, I know these are things that we try to, try to handle them, but you know, and as long as we're doing it not in a, I don't know, you know, in a, in a wrong way, you know, it's just as, like I said, I, you know, I feel it's out of my position to contact this employee and tell him what to do, and so I'm going to hit him over. So I'm going to ask that director, I'm going to let that director know what's going on here.
Well, can I, can I say, I think there's a line of demarcation here, because I'm with Commissioner Gregory on that, because if, if that's the case, I'm, I'm definitely guilty of calling a director to make a request, rather than, okay, I'm not, I am definitely not calling, I'm not calling an employee of a director, I'm going to say it like that, or calling the COO if I have a gripe against something, okay? If I got, and I'm just going to use this, if I have an employee issue, I don't believe we call a director or the employee, we go to the COO. But if we have a task that needs to be done in our district, I, I think it would be appropriate...
But you can't get that direction, directive to do a task.
Exactly. Well, no, 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 I'm not saying do, for instance, I'm going to use the dead deer or trash.
A request.
I recognize what I meant, a request.
That word that you said works.
Yeah, well, then we can make that a request to the director.
Yeah, so we, that would come, Mr. Reed. Please, I've been going a little bit.
Okay, so... So maybe instead of saying direct any, I can say maybe order any department head. In that way, if you're just saying I'm making a request, or maybe I can, or...
I, I think, I think that works, what you just said, you said...
Say, order a department head to do a job or perform a task.
They shall not order any department head or county department to perform. Yes, because what we're doing is making a request for them to do something, such as Commissioner Gregory's example, there's trash on the roadway, I'm just letting you know, hopefully you can get a crew out there to pick up the trash or get it done. Because as Commissioner Davis said, we all guilty of that, because we all pick up the phone and let our, whether it's the warden or the sheriff or whoever, know about areas that can use a trash cleanup, or whatever the situation may be. So, yeah, I agree with that, that we can tweak that a certain way to at least give that, that much latitude for a commissioner to do so. But af, actually directing a department head to do a, to do or perform a certain task would need to go through. Let's say, at the Lake Spivey Recreation Center, that there's an issue with, that needs to be completed at the, at the center.
Physical, okay.
I think that you would need, if you see it and notate it, then you need to get with the COO, and tell COO that, hey, I noticed this, then it needs to be taken care of, because that's a task, something that needs to be done. So the COO should have the lab, we should go to the COO to do that.
And so, when I can...
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
And again, I'm sorry, Mr. Reed, and again, I wish you would just, number one, just take it back and tweak that a little bit, before, you know, we, if we, you know, decided to go on this, simply because, again, um, we're out in the community, the commissioners, we're out in the community a lot more than our directors probably, and, you know, we see these things, and it's just, and citizens are going to call up, the same way you said earlier, Mr. Reed, you know, I know we try to operate a little different, we've always operated a little different because our citizens, they know us, they have confidence in us, and so they feel okay, if I call for Mr. Davis, he's going to get that trash up. So we're, we're not going to get away from that anytime soon. And this COO has an emergency again in the afternoon, and they have the trash bags still there. So again, I would just wish that you would kind of take that, tweak it a little bit to say something to the effect that, to let it be known that one person just cannot demand this or that, because we operate as a board. So I don't know how, how you, you know, you phrase this, but, you know, if somebody said, well, you need to get a, put up a little fence, right there, warden or whatever, that's going outside of our scope of what we're supposed to do. So I, I, I guess sometimes we got a way for, you know, you just tweak it a little bit that is known that we are not, that one person cannot demand, you know, that a director do this or that, because we operate as a board.
Yeah, I think everybody on, well, the ones that's on this call or in the meeting agrees with that, Commissioner Gregory. So, Mr. Reed and myself, we will work on some language and try to tweak it and get it, get it back out for the board to take a review of it.
Okay.
So, yeah, we all agree about that.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Go ahead, Mr. Reed.
Okay. The next one is the publicly state that they intend to fire or discipline any county employee. Reprimand, you can't directly reprimand any county employee. If a commissioner believes that the county employee should be reprimanded, they should notify the chief operating officer. And then, of course, if the chief operating officer is the one who should be reprimanded, then it would go through executive session. And next is use profanity, insulting, or demeaning words about a county employee in the presence of that employee, or in the presence of any other county employee. Call into question the qualifications or competency of a county employee in the presence of that employee, or in the presence of another county employee. Again, if there are any concerns about qualifications or competency should be brought within executive session. And then, demand that the chief operating officer or any department head stop what he or she is doing, and immediately attend to the commissioner's business. Again, that, there's another provision in that says that if you want to have something done by a county employee, that they would schedule that at a time that is mutually convenient to all who are concerned. Promise on behalf of the county to act or to pass any ordinance, resolution, contract, or agreement. Now, the key word here is promise. That doesn't mean, you can always say, hey, well, I support, you know, or something along those lines, but saying, well, I promise that this is going to be passed, that is outside this, this code of conduct. Agree to buy or sell anything of value on behalf of the county without advance approval. Again, this would be outside of whatever is under the purchasing code. This was just saying, well, we promise that we're going to buy this particular product or whatever, similar to what's in seven. Attempt to negotiate county business with any private party or representative of another government or unit without the advance approval. Again, this is not talking about something you want to bring to consideration by the board, but where you are saying you are speaking on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners is giving, giving the author, giving the impression you have the authority to negotiate for the county on a particular instance. So, and again, it says by way of example, it's permissible for any commissioner to discuss county business in general terms with private parties and representatives of other governmental units. However, a commissioner shall not make any written offers, draft any agreements, edit or revise any proposed agreements or plans, or suggest or propose any specific terms concerning the money or services to be provided or received by the county, unless that commissioner has received expressed authority, authorization in advance by a majority vote of the Board of Commissioners.
Can I ask on that one, you're the attorney, but isn't that, I mean, a conflict of interest and/or illegal?
Well, I don't know about necessarily conflict of interest, it just depends on what the subject matter, what you're talking about. Here, really, they're dealing more with giving the impression that you as an individual commissioner are speaking for the entire county, if the board as a whole has not given authority to do so.
Okay.
That's what these rules are primarily designed to reflect. There is, as I, as I mentioned earlier, this was taken from the Butts County ordinance, or at least started off with a lot of their provisions. They had a provision in there that prohibited speaking with any representative of the news media on behalf of the county or Board of Commissioners without advance approval. Remove that mainly because that's not the culture here. And then also, I added language, because I said it before, they just had a blanket prohibition of doing any of the last nine or 10 things I just spoke about, but we put added language in there to say that a majority of vote of the Board of Commissioners allow you to do these things. If you have previous direction from the chief operating officer, or if there's an exigency relating to an issue in your district, then that's when you have the ability to, do the nine or 10 things that I just talked about. Finally, penalties, that you have the responsibility to police itself and enforce the ordinance, you have the right to bring a suspected violation of the ordinance to the attention of the full board. Any accusation, however, is deliberated on an executive session, but a vote or any penalty is taken in open, public session with all members of the Board of Commissioners present. And if this board determines by a majority vote that a violation of the ordinance has occurred, this board has the authority to impose one or more of the following penalties upon the offending commissioner. A verbal censure, that's just noted in the minutes without further elaboration. In other words, when you make that motion, the other commissioner doesn't have a chance to come up and say, well, here's what I want to say. It's just noted in the minutes, if it's a censure, that's it. A written censure, meaning that you write something that's made a part of the minutes, specifically outlining the facts, underline the violation. Removal of the commissioner from membership of any committee, association, authority, or group which the offending commissioner is involved in, in their capacity as a Clayton County Commissioner. I'll talk a little bit more of that in a second. And then the last is, you have the authority to, if a majority vote of the board agrees to do so, impose a fine not to exceed $500 per offense, which shall be paid by the offending commissioner to the general fund of Clayton County within 10 days of the board's vote establishing a violation. And if the board, if the commissioner chooses not to do so, it can be withheld from their compensation. So, if the Butts County ordinance did not have authority within one of the places from which you could be removed, so we added the word authority, and also added that the removal from any of those groups is only if this board actually appointed that commissioner to one of those particular groups in question. So we're not talking about, you know, removing somebody from a homeowners association or something, or where you're sitting there in your individual capacity. This would be only...
Or something like ABCG?
No, no.
If you're appointed, then...
I mean, I would think so, why?
No, because this board does not appoint anybody to ACGG.
So inside of the, okay, county.
Right.
It's closed down from something like your end ACCG or something.
Exactly.
If you're on a board that's designated by your position as a, as a commissioner, then that can't be touched. But if all of us say, come together and say, we're going to put Commissioner Davis on a board, and we vote as a board to put him on it, then that's the type of board that we could take him back off of.
Got you.
Okay, I got you.
Let, let me ask you this, and this is just, because we don't want it to be personal, does that person have the right to appeal in any type of way?
Well, you, there's always the right to appeal of a county ordinance, it would be by writ assert, you know, you'd have to go file particular paperwork in court and stuff like that.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about if you go back to the last... Well, I'm, I'm talking about if you go back to the last slide where it talks about the written censure, the verbal censure, and I forget what the third one was, but if they says, I don't believe I've done this, I want to appeal that decision for what's taking place, do they have the ability to do that?
Yes, it would go to outside of this body, it would go to a court if the, if the commissioner chose to do so, because otherwise, if you were appealing, you would be basically coming back before the same board that's already agreed, that a majority of you agree that this conduct violated whatever code that you have.
So that method does exist, okay.
Yeah, but at who, at whose expense would that person be making their appeal at? Would the county be on the line, or would they have to come out of their own pocket? Because their, the penalty phase of it, if they had to pay 500, would have to come out of their personal pocket.
I would say, right now, just hypothetically speaking, it would probably come out of that commissioner's. But, you know, it depends, a judge could say otherwise, they could say that we think that the county should pay for the cost of, of defense of this particular issue. So I, I, I'm just saying hypothetically right now, it probably would come from the commissioner on the front end, and then perhaps a judge could say, well, no, I think the county needs to pay for the cost of their defense.
Or if it's overturned, then they could ask for the money back.
Correct, right.
Okay. Go ahead.
Actually, that's all I had, oops.
Okay.
So.
Any additional questions?
I do.
I just have a-
Go ahead, Commissioner Gregory, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to say, Mr. Reed, I know this is probably kind of interesting for you to do, but it really does, I think that to me is just, you know, we're policing ourselves. We spend a lot of money in this county, we, you know, did this rebrand, and we're trying to rebrand, and basically, we're just setting, you know, some standards for us to guide ourselves by. And you all have seen all the videos on YouTube and everywhere else where all these chemical people, they enjoy everything from fighting, throwing water on each other, and if we are, if we say we're serious about the brand of this county and how people want to see us, we have to set the example. So, you know, while some of them may seem somewhat harsh, but they're not. It's, it's the same thing we expect, you know, of our children. For example, today I saw someone said, you know, you walk in a place and they said, put your mask on, and the adult doesn't have the mask on, they walk in a place, what are you teaching that child with you? And it's the same thing with us as commissioners. If we are, if we say we want a new brand for this county, and we say we're planning for our future, we're making, we want to, they don't make you leaders, this is just a guidebook for us. I don't see anything in there that I can't do, or I didn't know from the beginning, you know, when I came on board and so forth, you know, for show of respect to the people who work for us, show of respect for ourselves, and otherwise. And we all know this is a tough job when you get in it, and we may have citizens to come up, you know, it's wear up, it does attack us, but how we respond is the, is what represents Clayton County. So that's it.
Absolutely. Commissioner Davis?
Two questions. One, do the majority of the metro Atlanta counties and the counties that you see have a code of conduct in place?
Uh, I have not, you know, it was 159, so-
Well, I meant, you know, the one, that's why I said the one you looked at, I didn't want to go all of Georgia.
Um, I, I'll say that when I just did a search in Municho for code of conduct, there were a lot that came up.
Okay, great, great. And the other part is, even with this code of conduct, should it go into anything with, as far as, because we're still dealing with constituents, as far as use, usage of county tools, emails, things of that nature?
Improper use, or do we have an ordinance that already dictates that?
I mean, what do you, what do you name?
You think so? I'm just, I-
Because I'm trying to figure, okay, what do you name by county emails?
I'm just, well, I'm just saying, you know, maybe how we begin to use them, you know, I-
I think we have some other policies, but, but, but to your point, we'll, we'll research that, but I think there's some other policies.
I don't want to go too deep, Commissioner Gregory.
Yeah, yeah, that's not, that's not. But, yeah, there are policies in place for that. Do you have any other questions?
No.
But, yeah, last thing I'm just gonna say is, I agree 100% with Commissioner Gregory, you know, he's sitting in the corum as to how we should be acting as a board. I think this just enhances the way we should be already acting. And, you know, we gotta set the example, because not only are we elected officials by the citizens of Clayton County, but we also have a duty and responsibility to our directors and people who are actually doing a lot of, or all of the hard work in Clayton County that makes us shine, makes our job easier, and there needs to be a clear chain of command and respect for them, as well as us respecting each other. So I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Gregory. All right. Anything else? All right, well, we will tweak that one request that you had, Commissioner Gregory, and get back to the whole board.
Okay.
Other than that, if there's no other business for the board, other than I will say, those online, early voting for another week, is that correct, for another week? January 5th is the election date. If you don't early vote, please, go out and vote. January 5th, we'll have numerous sites open. This is a pivotal year for us to make sure that our voting rights are exercised, and I definitely encourage each and every one of you to vote. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner-
Speaking of employees and so forth, I think I sent a, an email today about Director Dozier being honored.
Yeah, she was honored by the Arnold Schwarzenegger Foundation, and she was called some kind of hero, what is it called?
Superhero.
Uh, superhero, a person who supports fair elections, and for the work that she's done this election cycle. We all know that Clayton County was on the forefront of the national news, as well as international, and she, she and her staff did a tremendous job in working hard, in working hard to make sure that that count was done accurately, fairly, and she, it was done in a way that we can be proud of our elections team. So, thank you for bringing that up as well, and congratulations to-
I wanted, I wanted to say also too, because on the first day of early vote, my husband and I were there first, and my first went in line, but we were some of the first was in line, and as I said earlier, you know, the constituents and people we know in the community, they don't talk to us, and they were calling and emailing me, you know, that the voting was just smooth, roll tide was perfect. So, they let us know, and so that was a good thing, just my experience of that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I just wanted to say, I think she was one of five people in the country.
Yeah, yeah, that award was given to five people throughout the nation. She was one of five, that is how tremendous of a job that her and her staff did, and was recognized for. So, again, I appreciate you bringing that up. All right, anything else? If not, we stand adjourned. Again, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and God bless.